Clerk Scott, roll call of members.
Counselor Golub.
Here.
President Gwynn.
Here.
Counselor Disorga.
Here.
Counselor Bottomley.
Here.
Counselor Bullock.
Here.
Counselor Gilmore.
Here.
Counselor Lapienski.
Here.
Counselor Healy.
I don't know if they can hear us. Derek, can you hear us?
There we go. Counselor Healy.
I could hear you now.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer.
Here.
Vice President Forgé.
Here.
Counselor Ricketts.
Present.
Counselor Toranzo.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. A pledge of allegiance voluntary.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no minutes to approve this evening. I will make a quick statement. Given the amount of time we have between now and the general election of the city of Greenfield, I would like to remind all present that tonight is the regular business meeting of the Greenfield City Council. It is not a political or candidate debate. If we feel it's going in that direction from either anyone present, I will stop that conversation this evening because we have things to do and an agenda to get through. So I appreciate keeping to our agendas this evening. Communications from the superintendent of schools and the school committee.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. The superintendent sends her regrets. She is not feeling well today, and I asked her to stay home. I have the items from your agenda, and I'll start with the redistricting one. It looks like the items we attempted to put forward for last month's agenda are now on this month's agenda. You may recall, we didn't actually have an opportunity to speak to you last month. So it looks like the first three items are from last month. So I'm actually going to cover those things, but with the updated information, the items from this month. We can start with the redistricting. We are at the point where the school committee needs to make decisions, a couple of decisions about redistricting in the elementary schools. And at our October meeting, we only barely had a quorum, which is four members out of seven. And so we delayed the actual votes related to that until our November meeting. We had a number of communications from the public, which we appreciate. We have emails that we're receiving, which we absolutely read and respond to and appreciate. And we look forward to doing what is best for the students. And it's been an interesting discussion, and I hope that we can do the right thing by everyone in how we approach it. We will take, not exactly sure how we will go about it, but I believe we'll actually take two votes related to redistricting. And we will also try to put a calendar in place related to having this happen on a regular basis. We have not had this review and assessment of where the lines are drawn for the boundaries for the different elementary schools in, I would say, close to 10 years. And that has created a great piece of the inequity that we're seeing. And so, like I said, we welcome communications about that from everyone up until when we anticipate we will vote on it in November. We did launch our new website. It, of course, corresponded with a massive outage from our website hosting service, which is the Collaborative for Educational Services in Northampton. So it came up and then immediately went down. That was two weekends ago. But it is now up and running, and you should hopefully be able to find what you need about the schools there. And we certainly welcome feedback that can go to the superintendent if you have feedback about the restructuring of the website. Hiring our new superintendent. So we had a special meeting, the first Wednesday in October, I believe that was the fourth, where we met with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They're a professional organization that offers us guidance on any number of things related to school committee business. They were the firm that coordinated our search when we hired Superintendent DeBarge. And we asked for their guidance in this process. And they very clearly shared with us in that public meeting, that is available online if you haven't seen it and you're interested, that if we have a viable internal candidate, we should be looking internally in that process. And we've also had literally unanimous feedback from the public, from the community, that that internal candidate in Assistant Superintendent Karen Patino is the choice that people would want us to make. So at our meeting last week, we did adopt a motion to move forward with appointing Karen Patino as our next superintendent effective July 1 of 2024. And that's pending two things, a public interview with her, and then also successful contract negotiations. We are in the process of scheduling that public interview. I think it will be posted and publicized by the end of this week, in the first week of November. And we are thrilled to be able to go through this process with Karen, and we hope it to be successful. Just a calendar note. I'm going to save the thing about the five-year transportation contract for the last piece. We have a calendar note. Next week, the Thursday and Friday, the 26th and 27th, are half-days for most students. You can refer to the school committee calendar for details. There's no pre-K on either of those days. Through 7th grade has a half-day on, or early dismissal on Thursday, and everybody has it on Friday, and that's related to parent-teacher conferences. Okay, budget subcommittee. There will be a budget subcommittee meeting where they're going to discuss our capital requests that will ultimately come to the city through the capital process. That meeting is scheduled for October 30. I'm sorry, I forgot the time, but it should be posted very soon. And those subcommittee meetings, we do those in a remote setting, so you can log in or you can watch it afterwards. And then the piece about the school transportation bid, we're involved with, I guess, a consortium of all the other Franklin County school districts, where we're going to attempt to do a bid for transportation services, busing services. And they would like to go after a five-year contract on this. And we were instructed by that consortium that we needed to get approval from our funding authority. And we have the wording of the motion that needs to come forward. And this is your opportunity, I guess, to discuss it with us if you have questions. This is not actually, you won't have the motion on your council agenda for tonight. But if we hear from our funding authority that you all would not approve a five-year contract, there's no sense in moving forward with the rest of the discussion with the consortium, which is why we'll do it this way. And that's everything I have for you, and I would take your questions.
Counsel Ricketts.
Thank you for that, Chairman Peretti. So this five-year transportation, is this like glimmer of hope we could have? Because transportation is a huge part of the budget, and if everybody's working together, it looks like they're trying to figure it out so everybody can afford it.
I wish the superintendent was here to give you more context, and I actually will make sure she follows up in an email to provide that context. I know that certainly the feeling is we can get much stronger pricing if we go about it this way. And there definitely is a master general law related specifically to school transportation that says it can't be a contract over three years unless it's approved by the funding authority for the district. But yeah, we would like to continue with this discussion. Kosmescus, the main transportation provider in the area, has been sold. And so I think there's likely a feeling that there could be some different arrangements there. And I honestly don't have any more context than that.
Thank you.
Counselor Toranzo, I'll recognize you just in one second. I just want to give a base of clarification. As Chair Peretti knows, we must add 10 emails in the last three days over this question. And the reason that you didn't see it on any agenda until our next one is it's very odd that we're asked to be involved in the procurement at all. That is not our role. That's the executive side. We have to approve the contract if it's over three years, because that's what our charter says. In this case, if it's a guideline of the group saying they want us to say we're happy to pursue this, that would not be the typical way we would go about it. But as long as our chief procurement officer was in agreement, and we gave our support in addition, it doesn't really do anything. We still would have the approval on the financial piece that comes after the negotiation. So just a little clarification, and it only took 10 emails to figure out what it was. And the line that Chair Peretti just delivered, which was they wanted the financial...
Our funding authority.
Funding authority to say that it was okay. That changes, that gives a reason, because that was part of that part. But that's normally not the legislative role. That's the executive role. So as I had stated with Clerk Scott and through some emails, I have no problem adding that to the agenda if we're all in agreement. You know, we can go through that piece, you know, as we get there. So just a quick, that's why I was kind of going around and around, because it was just a little bit different than we're normally asked in this role. Counselor Toranzo?
So when are these, do you know when, if we were to say, yeah, cool, go for it, and these talks go underway, would it be... With the transportation company knowing that this redistricting is going to happen and what that would change versus what, I mean, I guess that would all be next year anyway, right? But would that be, would those parts already be ironed out to present to the busing company so that they know what they're essentially giving us a price on? Like, I don't know, like, where the timeline would meet on whether or not we would be ready to do that.
I think it'll be pretty close. And we have on occasion also, because certain houses in our neighborhoods or cul-de-sacs or whatever don't always have kids, kids where they live is a fluid thing. We have the ability to make those changes on a case-by-case and kind of day-to-day basis related to transportation of our students. So those pieces are not a huge part of this. It's more about how many students total, how many buses they need. And again, I can have the superintendent follow-up or the business manager with more context about what's within the transportation contract. But the day-to-day pieces about who gets picked up where is not really impacted much with the redrawing of the lines, because it's the same number of students.
I just didn't know if it would change the number of buses to one area versus another.
Yeah, thank you. I think that if we were concerned about that piece, we would have already tried to kind of work on that piece related to redistricting. Nothing that I have heard from our transportation coordinator has indicated that there is a huge, there's any of it makes a big, big change with what we're paying. Thank you for the question.
The chair recognizes Andy Poccatte, school business manager.
Oh, yay, he's here. Thank you, Andy.
He's here. If we can bring him up, and maybe we can do the video thing like we figured out last time. Yeah, let me just, we'll go back to council in a second. But Andy, did you have some information to...
Yes, I do. Thank you very, yes, thank you for recognizing me. Regarding the process, I guess I would say the understanding from when this was done, I'd say for our other clients, was that per 30B, it stated that the appropriating authority authorizes the engagement of a five-year contract. And they identified the appropriating authority as town meeting and a town formal government and city council in a city. So hence the reason why it is that we brought it to the city council. The issue concerning regarding the number of buses, in the specifications, we actually have in the specifications, the determination of the number of buses are dictated by each respective district. So let's play out the scenario that when we do the redistricting, we either have the ability to reduce a bus, we would then be able to, that's, you know, the cost per bus per day would then be reduced by said bus per the specification. So, no pun intended, we drive the bus as far as the number that we need. And then if by chance during the, even after we engage in redistricting, should we end up doing that, if mid-year we decide that we can go with one reduced bus, we can then reduce and then reduce the contract for the remainder of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
And the concept of the cooperative bidding was, as I apologize, the previous counselor said, this has been done before. Greenfield participated five years ago. We are guessing, obviously, by the fact that this is being questioned now, that it wasn't brought to your attention back then under the previous administration. That being said, the whole concept is to, with the buying power of combining these districts in Franklin County, that we would get more, I'd say, better pricing for all involved. I can speak for, we have done this cooperative bidding for transportation for three of our districts of our clients, and we've actually asked at times for price per, like, each district individually, and then price per district for a cooperative bid. And when we've done that in the past, the cooperative bidding price has always been less than the individual pricing per district.
Andy, point of clarification. I would not say that we're, that we weren't presented with that five years ago. I would say that we don't recall that we were presented with that five years ago.
Fair enough.
All right. Counselor Gilmore.
Thank you, Andy.
I can withdraw.
You're all set?
It was close enough to his question.
Counselor Forgé.
Chair Peretti, could you just remind us what the busing looks like at this particular moment in Greenfield? In other words, Kosmescus is our vendor?
Yes.
Are the people who drive the buses, et cetera, are they employees of the school department? Do they have union contracts with the school department?
They are not. So there are two transportation departments for Greenfield. We have a fleet of mostly minivans that we operate. I want to say there's 14. I might be off on that number. And our own drivers for those. And we have a couple of small buses, yellow buses as well, that belong to the district. The bulk of our transportation of students to and from schools in the district is by Kosmescus, and those bus drivers are employees of Kosmescus. And I should also add that related to transportation, we did just have, our transportation workers in district are unionized, and we did just settle another, a new three-year contract with them. Thank you for the question.
Counselor Lapienski?
Yeah, so I have two questions. The first one is, how far from a school does a student have to live in order to be eligible for bus transportation?
I believe that the cutoff is a mile, greater than a mile is bus transportation. There are exceptions to that. For example, Greenfield Gardens goes currently to Newton School, and they are, as the crow flies, closer to that, the school than, much closer than a mile. However, there is no safe sidewalk walking route, and there is bus transportation provided. And those are, those decisions are, again, made on a case-by-case basis within the district. And the policy belongs to the district, so that is one of those things that we could look at in terms of, does a mile make sense? Even before I was on the school committee, I had been active in asking for better, safer streets, safer sidewalks for folks after trying to walk my daughter from Riddell Street and crossing High Street to the middle school every morning, and nearly us losing our lives with drivers on High Street. And that is common throughout the city. We need to do a better job with safe sidewalks and safe crossings of our busy streets, especially for our school students.
Well, one second. Jasper, I'll come back to you. Did you have an answer? Your hand came up, Mr. Poccatte.
Yes, I was going to say, the statute states that it is 1.5 miles portal to portal, and then for elementary school, it's one mile. So, and by portal to portal means that we don't drop a plum line in the middle of the building and do a radius of a mile it's measuring on the streets. And then obviously, if indeed, as Chair Peretti is describing, if there are no commonly traveled sidewalks or anything like that, then, you know, it would dictate that you would be required to provide transportation.
Counselor Lapienski?
Yeah, so my second question is coming up, not for the first time, because I'm being asked about it by my constituents, whether Green River School is ever going to get used again.
That's a great question. We are engaged in a number of different conversations currently about what to do with Green River School. They also have the outstanding problem that has existed since, I believe, 2019, maybe earlier, that there is no HVAC system in that school.
Right.
So that would need to be resolved, whether we were to, with any scenario, pretty much except selling it as-is, we would need to resolve that piece.
Are there any questions for Counselor Disorga?
Do you know when the current contract with transportation expires?
Not off the top of my head, Mr. Poccatte May.
Yes, this is the, this is the last year. So this coming, FY '24 is the last year of the contract.
Are there any, yes, Counsel Golub.
So I feel like I've been playing catch-up and trying to, trying to track the conversation. So I think I'll have more conversations later. I'll probably listen again and catch myself up. But my question, one question that I have is if this does come to council, when would that be?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible. Okay, and we're contracting for services, for who's, for who's running the services of the fleet, right?
I think you're understanding, I'm understanding your question. It wouldn't necessarily be Kosmescus that is a successful bidder. It could be another outfit, for sure.
And I guess one of my questions is, I was recently at a conversation of municipal electeds talking about solutions to climate change, and there was a discussion of a lot of municipalities looking to have electric fleets for school buses. I have no idea if that's an alternative, but that is what this conversation is prompting in my mind, and I'm just curious if you have any, like, if that's, if that is an opportunity or if there's, if that is entering into the conversation at all.
Gosh, you know, related to the contract, I wouldn't have any idea, and we really would be beholden by to whatever company, the company has in their fleet that gets the contract or bids on it. And related to our fleet of our own vehicles, that is something that, when we purchase those or lease those, that's done really on the city side. It's not done by us specifically on the school side. So it would go through procurement, just like anything else, and the, you know, the parameters of the procurement process.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken? All right, we're going to close. And just let me reiterate one more time before we leave this topic. This is a two-part situation that we're being asked to do. One is we'll have an initial vote to whether we're, we allow them to participate in this process. That would be coming before us next meeting. And then after, if, depending on what we say, if we gave them a positive and they went and they did their due diligence, then they got a contract. Then when the contract was going for approval, we would then have to approve it based on the financial part, which is our normal role. So it comes back again. We're not saying, just go do it. We're saying, yes, you can participate, but we still get to say yea or nay to the amount of money you choose to spend to do that in the end. So two pieces.
Thank you.
That is not the norm. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Communications from the mayor. Counselor Bullock?
Are we streaming this? Is GCTV streaming this meeting right now? Because I've got a couple emails and texts that it's not streaming on YouTube or online.
As did I, so I'm not sure about that.
Let me, are we streaming? Can you, Clerk Scott, can you check? There could be something not connected. We'll check. It's interesting, because normally when I look at this screen here, I see that screen, you know, but tonight I see myself on that camera, so it's a bit distracting. But it's not the norm. Every time I look at, I look at Kathy, I, it's like, you know, I'm like, looking at myself. It's quite odd. But that doesn't answer, we're not streaming. Is there, are we going to be? No. I might have an answer for you, Counsel Bullock. But the answer right now is this, no. It won't be live. It'll be available tomorrow.
Memorex.
It'll be, yeah. Counselor Ricketts, I like to show that you were still around in 1985, because, you know, no one else, no one else recognizes the Memorex reference but us. All right. Mayor Weeden-Gartner, if you could continue.
Sure. Good evening, councilors. So you had my memo, or you have my memo, on the items that you requested, the city plan for cold weather, the city's options regarding, excuse me, tax title taking, and the current Greenfield Land Court cases. And I'm, I can take questions on that later if you have additional questions. On the other topics, under the mayor's remarks, I can tell you, and I know some of you are very interested in the Collins Center Wage and Classification Study. It is going forward. It had a couple of just more internal and technical hiccups, so it's a little slower going than we had hoped. But it is underway now. And part of the process is that folks from the Collins Center are interviewing via Zoom various departments. And there's been one interview session. It's one of those things like, here are the times for the Zoom meetings. By all means, it's primarily for department heads, but if there's other staff, field supervisors, mid-level managers, by all means, if you can't take that, if you can't do that one, then you have to, you know, here are your two other options. So their research work is being done, and we look forward to, hopefully, sometime around the end of the year, the first part of the next year, to have the results of that. You have the quarterly grant list. I don't know if you have any questions. It's really there for your information, and I believe it was part of the backup that you received. I'd like to speak about school funding advocacy. I believe that's coming up on your agenda at some... I believe that's coming up on your agenda at some point this evening. And I want to say that I certainly support any kind of legislation that will make it more equitable, both for this region, in terms of the amount of money that we get to fund our schools. So the various bills, 335 and 337, in general, I support. And since it was brought up under the school committee remarks, I would just want to comment on the five-year contract, if I may, President Wint.
Yeah, I mean, we're tied on this piece, so yes.
Yes, okay, good. So, transportation is a very expensive part of our school budget. So anything that could alleviate that is something that is worthy of knowing about, understanding, and hopefully ultimately supporting. So because the mayor is the chief procurement officer, as soon as I, and I'm also on the school committee by virtue of the charter, as our, as is any mayor, as soon as I have the information that I need, a little bit more information on it, what I'm trying to convey to you tonight is, I'm generally in support of the concept of collaborating with other school districts, if it can result in a reduction for all of us in our transportation. And that's really all I have to say tonight.
All right, I'm going to open it up for questions. And just for point of clarification, Counselor Healy, you can hear us and correspond with us at any point during this meeting. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for the mayor this evening? On any of the topics? Okay, Counselor Lapinski?
Just wondering if you have any idea at this point when Court Square will be open to the public for the winter, or for traffic?
It'll be, in fact, I glanced at an email this afternoon with regard to when the farmer's market, it generally coincides with when they no longer are in Court Square. So it's the end of October, whatever the last weekend, I believe it is, in October, is what I believe is the date that the farmer's market is no longer there. So it's, I think the email I saw was a confirmation. I don't know if we got an answer on that. But I, I think in general, that is, it's usually the end of October.
And did I see another, Counselor Golub, did you have something?
Yes, I'm seeing on the grants award, I'm wondering if you can speak more to the grants that are related to GSAT, because that is the equity with GSAT and extending GSAT to Precinct One is a really, really key issue. So I'm just curious what these grants entail and if my constituents will benefit from, if this will help the expansion to Precinct One at all.
You know, I'm, if you'll give me a moment to, it's a lengthy document, as you know, nine pages. Let me refresh my memory. Oh, there they are. Good. Okay, so I'm not terribly familiar with the MBI Municipal Digital Equity Planning Grant. It does say here, Technical Assistance for Development of a Greenfield Digital Equity Plan. So to the, I couldn't give you right now. I think that would be a, a good question for John, what, what the status of, of a greenfield digital equity plan is. I do believe they are working on it. Whether it has been completed, I don't know. The Community Development Block Grant Money is typically ongoing, CDBG money for low to moderate, low mod income infrastructure. Again, that is assistance for getting GSAT in low mod income areas in the city, getting it, you know, set up so that people can have an advantage, I think to your question, have the advantage of being able to become subscribers. Again, I don't know the exact status of where that's at. The ARPA funding is the money that has been given to them under ARPA, and they are definitely using it in a variety of ways to ensure that, you know, certain expenses for, it's very expensive for cabling and all the different things that go along with putting in GSAT in underserved areas, which is the intention of that. So I know that they have been utilizing it. I probably had the status of it at one point, and I certainly could get you that. You know, how much has been spent versus, you know, how much was given and then how much of it has been spent. So I'll make a note on that. But I think a couple, those other questions are probably appropriately addressed to John.
And we can ask for that follow-up from GSAT. Counselor Toronto?
I guess I would just ask, I, I kind of thought back when we changed the, the format to the 10-minute rule, that this might happen at some point. I would, I would ask if you could, even in a nutshell, give us your, though we get them in the email, the, the cold weather plan, the tax title taking updates, those updates that you were talking about, that we get in our email, the public doesn't see our email? So I didn't know if in a nutshell, I know that some of those things might be done, like I said, in the interest of time, the time restriction, and if there's a lot of topics on there. But I'm sure that we're not the only ones who have those questions, and I, I think it would be.
You just asking me to read this, or at least give you the high points of it publicly?
I mean, yeah, essentially, like, the, the updates that, you know, like I said, we get them in our, in our backup in our email, but the public doesn't get a chance to view those, so I think.
Okay. Well, as I indicated in the, let's talk with, we'll take the first one, city plan for cold weather. It's essentially the same as it usually is. We work in conjunction with social service agencies. I wish that it was more robust than it is, but it isn't. I mean, we, we managed to get quite a bit done. But, so what happens is we have our city buildings, primarily the library and the John Zahn Center, open and available during enormous, normal business hours for, on very, very cold days for certain, warming centers, but they're generally open. And people are welcome to come in and spend a little while just to get, get warm. The Police Department, Community Resource Co-Response Unit, will regularly check on encampments of our unhoused individuals to see who may need and want assistance and shelter. Some of those people actually prefer to remain out of shelters. And it's my understanding that the Police Department does have, in those cases, if they observe that maybe they don't have an adequate tent, or they don't have adequate sleeping gear, they have access to those. And certainly if people were to ask for them, they would, you know, attempt to accommodate them. And one of our, we met regularly through the summer to see if we could beef this up a little bit. When I say we met regularly, the "we" is the social service agencies that we usually work with, CSO, Interfaith Council, different, different groups. Those are the primary ones. We met regularly through the Salvation Army, I left them out. We met regularly with them through the summer to see what we could do. Unfortunately, the Salvation Army is running low on their hotel vouchers and just, it's an internal thing with them. It's how they receive them. It doesn't have anything to do with the city. They will not get them replenished until a little bit later in the winter, but then that might be just in time. It's difficult to know. And, but they are still, and as they are today, remain open for showers and laundry services during regular daytime hours. So there's a little bit of an opportunity for people to come in and, and take care of their needs and also get warm. And I'm particularly happy to say that the CSO has identified that they have the capacity to add five more beds with staffing to the 40 that they already have. So they have 40 beds available through the winter. They were short on funding at one of our meetings. They weren't, they didn't come asking for assistance, but they did let us know that without a proper, proper funding, they couldn't staff those additional five beds to the tune of $9,000 per bed. And I know that sounds like a lot, but that has to do with the 24-hour staffing type of situation. And that's their calculation. So it amounted to about $45,000. So we tried to figure out if the city would be able, what, what resources we might have to assist with them. And fortunately, through some repurposing of CDBG funds, we were able to come up with the $45,000 to enable them to add those beds. So at CSO, there will be an additional 40, now additional, was 40, now it will be 45. And that's only a small number of beds, but it is adding to the beds that are already available. And I know that from time to time, if they have capacity, you know, when there's overflow, they try to accommodate people in other areas of the shelter as best as possible. That was particularly critical during COVID, but they, they do try to do that. We generally have two rooms reserved, the city does through the Health Department, two rooms reserved at the Days Inn for, that can be, we can accommodate with hotel vouchers. We can pay, pay for them. It's only two rooms, but generally that's what we have available all year long. And I'm, because of the situation with the Days Inn being used through the state for the immigrant population that has come to our community, I, it's been a little bit of a back and forth as to whether those two rooms are consistently available. I still don't have a full confirmation on that. So that's that particular one.
I think we had a follow-up question on the, is that it on your cold weather plan?
That's, that's it for the cold weather plan.
Counselor Bullock, did you have something to ask on that?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the cold weather plan not looking different this year for a few reasons. One is it's anticipated to be a colder winter than last with more snow, which no one knows the weather. But the other is that we are about to reach the threshold in Massachusetts for housing, even though we're a right-to-housing state, and so there is going to be a waitlist. I did call to find out how many families we had in current eviction proceedings in Franklin County, and it's significant.
Yes, it is.
And so in my, you know, in my 15 years where I helped people get into shelter on a daily basis through DHCD, it's, it's very difficult to do. And I'm concerned that if we don't have a different plan this year, we're going to see an increase of families that are out in the cold. And, and I know there is those individuals who, who don't feel comfortable or safe in shelter, and so they don't enter into shelter. But in my experience, families almost always want to be in shelter. And so I, as much as the options feel slim, I think there's potentially an appetite from the state to waive some bylaws because of the state of emergency that we're currently seeing with housing, to allow things like churches, to allow overnight warming centers and things like that. And I, I really want to push the city to explore those options at a state level, because, I mean, I'm concerned for my previous colleagues that they're the ones who are going to be locking the door and going home and having this weigh heavy on them at the end of the night. But I'm also concerned that we're going to see families that are separated because the parents can't find housing with their, with their children. So I just think that having the same plan is not adequate this year. And I'm wondering if you're open to working, to find some of those state of emergency openings and what the bylaws might be?
I think I'm understanding where you're going, and I couldn't agree with you more. You know, whether it's a permanent solution or not, you know, we know because of the weather, and we never know exactly what's going to happen, that it's fluid. So I'm quite willing to consult with EOHLC, or whoever at the state level, to see if there is such a thing as what you're talking about, which is a waiver of whether churches can be used for overnights and certain other items, certain other locations. Part of the issue is always money for staffing and who will staff them. And, and then who's willing to step up and do it? But if we were to find out that there was a pathway, an easier way to get whoever wants to step up, no, I think we would be very happy to work on that. I'm making a note. I'm, oh, nope, I think I'm done, unless somebody, was there another thing, Counselor Toronto?
Yeah, if you just wanted to speak, you know, roughly to the, the updates for the tax title and land court items that were there.
I, I don't have anything different than what I stated there. Oh, well, okay.
No, no, I mean, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we get, we got.
You get them, I'm sorry. No, I understand what you're saying. So the only thing that's really changed since you were given your, at the last meeting, you were given the, sort of the options that are available through, from Attorney Belcher-Timmy and Attorney Iris Leahy, those, Attorney Belcher-Timmy is the city solicitor, Iris Leahy is the tax attorney that works with us, and Treasurer Collector Kelly Varner. I think they gave you the options, which are basically that until the state legislature comes up with new laws on tax title taking, we'll, we will follow the laws as they exist today. And I think Counselor, I'm sorry, Treasurer Collector Kelly Varner went through, if not at that meeting, has done so at other meetings, that foreclosures are always our last resort here. And we go to great lengths in this city to ensure that people are given an opportunity to get right with their taxes. But sometimes that just can't happen. But it is rare that we have to do a foreclosure. However, based on the fact that the state, for whatever reasons, and I can't begin to know, is, I wouldn't say they're dragging their feet on coming up with the proper legislation to comply with the Supreme Court ruling, but that is where the, that is where the responsibility So I, I continue to ask that question, and I, you know, it's, I get, you know, that, there's a, I can't even remember the name of it, the number of the bill now. I believe it's a joint between the House and the Senate, is moving through its various committees. So hopefully we'll, we'll hear something very soon. But in the interim, we have been given permission, so to speak, by the DOR, to set up what's called an agency fund. And I have directed the Finance Department to set up an agency fund to hold any excess funds, so equity in essence. to set up an agency fund to hold any excess funds, so equity in essence, in, in anticipation of the legislature making new laws that instruct municipalities how to move forward after foreclosures. I'm thinking specifically of what happens to the, in essence, the money that is left after the city has recouped all of the legal costs and so forth. So I think that's certainly a worthwhile thing. I, I am on record as standing with our homeowners to support new laws in handling homeowners' equity following foreclosures. And the agency fund right now is what we can do. And the finance department and the collector treasurer had been instructed by me to set up such a fund.
Counselor Bullock.
Yeah, I was really happy to see that the agency fund was set up and also that you're in support of supporting homeowners in this process. I was able to speak with other municipalities that are doing things a little bit differently than Greenfield is doing things. I spoke at length with Somerville, both the city councillor there and the treasurer collector's office there, who basically haven't, haven't foreclosed on a property in 10 years. What they do is they file the tax taking right around the three-year mark. So they, you have to file it by three and a half. So they file it, they wait, and they work with the, work with the individual as long as they can. At three years, they file, they don't, they don't attempt to collect by foreclosure. They do attempt to go through the process that I believe that our city department has said that they go through, where they offer an abatement, a work plan, raft, things like that. And they, you know, I asked for the, for, you know, sort of procedurally, how are they doing this? So they do, this, this municipality and another municipality they spoke with do interpret the law to be discretionary to the city so that the city can file that tax title taking. It's on record that that lien is, is perfected, I think is the word that they used. And basically, what they said is they don't, they haven't done this in 10 years in Somerville because the level of debt owed is never close to the value of the property. So there's, there's never a risk of the city not getting their money. And the interest is so high on these liens that in, that no matter what, the city is going to get more than we're, than we're owed in real time. Basically, it's like, it's, we would have to be patient as a city. But what they do is that they start that process at 90%. So if a, if an individual hits 90% of the assessed value of their home, they then start the tax foreclosure process. And the tax collector's office and the city councillor I spoke with said that he thinks he's seen this happen one time in the last 10 years. And then I, I spoke with a couple other folks about how municipalities have been doing it. And basically, all of these have been internal policies that have come through the executive branch and departments. So they haven't been legislatively mandated by the city. But there was, you know, there was the thought between myself and a few other city councillors who spoke from other municipalities, that between charter and ordinance, there could be language that was directed towards the city and its officers to not pursue foreclosures on a property with a tax title lien until the total interest reaches, reaches 90%. So I guess what I was asking at the last city council meeting was what are our options to not be taking property and to find a humane choice to wait it out so that people can stay in their homes, especially because we're, like, we just talked about the cold weather plan, right? That some of the people that we have taken properties from now live in public housing. We're going to spend more money housing someone through public housing in home, in a homeless shelter than we are to allow them to stay in their property in the long term. What I was searching for was what is this humane choice? And I guess my question is, why can't we do what Somerville does? Why can't we do what Amherst does? There's other municipalities that are currently not foreclosing and not pursuing the, beyond the title recording so that they can get their money when a person passes away or, or a property gets sold. And they also did talk about this sometimes happens with developers, right? That a developer will come in, they'll work on a property for two years, they won't pay their taxes, and they just plan to roll that into the final cost before they sell, that they're going to pay it at 16%. So it seems to me there's other pathways that we haven't explored that would stop, one, the equity issue that we're having, that the, that the Supreme Court has ruled on, but also the foreclosure issue that I, that I'm actually very concerned about, which is that we're taking people out of homes.
Well, I, the Somerville process, up to a point, sounds very similar to ours. I think this is something that has been reported to you over the last year more than once. Collector Treasurer Varner has given you the steps that we go through. And as I have said before, and she has said, and I don't pretend to have those steps memorized, that it is a rare event. Nine times out of 10, most people who are facing foreclosure through the process that we do, do not get foreclosed on. It is an unusual situation. Probably the opportunities for foreclosure, just given the demographic of Somerville and Amherst, are probably more greater, or greater. Whereas in Greenfield, it, it doesn't happen that often because we do work with the homeowners right up to, as I said, the last resort. There could be the individual case that may be different than others that have reasons why eventually it, it leads to a foreclosure. I do think we do try to take these on a case-by-case basis, and sometimes it just ends up that way. So I'm certainly willing to go back over it again with Kelly and say, is there a pathway that's similar to the one that you have described, both for Amherst and, which I think she would be more familiar with, in Somerville? And if there is, and it suits what happens in Greenfield, then, you know, we might be able to look at that.
One follow-up is that, I want, like, I appreciate what, what Kelly has laid out as our process for supporting residents who are, who are, who owe back taxes or maybe heading towards foreclosure. And what I'm actually searching for is a policy, an internal policy and procedure that makes it so that there is, that we are treating people humanely and that people can stay in their homes. And so that it's not the risk of like, nine out of 10 times it doesn't happen because we are such a small community that that one time it does happen, it's, there's going to be a ripple effect. And so I'm actually, I'm very interested in the, the specific policy and procedure internally that the executive branch could put into place, rather than us going through a process of through ordinance having to put some, something into our charter or, or through ordinance, making it so that, you know, when we reach that 90% threshold, because I do think that there is a legal and equitable solution through policy that we can not be doing tax foreclosure.
Well, now that I understand what you're looking for, I can certainly discuss it.
I want to, I just want to end this discussion at this point and move on, only because we're turning into a little longer than, than a question. And I just want to make sure we continue to move on. Counselor Abiensky, I think you were next.
Well, mine, mine is very short. With regard to the agency fund, do you expect that Stephen Woodbridge, the one person who, there's, who, a lot of people have talked about, and he's also involved in legal action, do you know if the money from the sale of his house will be in that fund?
I don't know if I can answer that question accurately. It is an active court case, and there could well be a settlement within the court case in which the city would be, and I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit reluctant to say one way or the other because it does involve the city in what could be the outcome. Just to know that normally if there is a settlement, you know, and the settlement goes against the city, the city pays. The money that you're talking about, no, I don't, I'm going to go in, you know, Director Schindler might be able to bet or answer it. That was a couple of years ago. So I think that has already foreclosed to the general fund, I mean, foreclosed, has closed to the general fund and isn't, in essence, available in an agency fund because that has only just now been set up.
Well, sure. So I, I, I guess, that, that much I understood. Obviously, the money's already been rolled into the general fund and spent. My question was more if you would consider placing money into the agency fund for people who've gone through this process within the last few years, or especially since the Supreme Court case. You know, even though obviously you don't have to, it would be a nice thing to do, and it would certainly make right with those people if you in fact believe that that wasn't the right thing to do and you were otherwise obligated by the state.
I believe that the DOR's instructions are proactive, you know, going forward, not retroactive. I'm happy to get further clarification on that.
Yeah. That's, that's my suggestion. I don't know if it's possible, but it comes to mind. Anyway, thank you for your response.
Sure. I think we're done?
I think we might have had one more. And I, Counselor Disorder.
Our free cash was certified on, on Monday, correct?
That is correct.
That, that's 2 million?
2.8.
2.8 million. Okay. I just wondered if you wanted to announce anything about that? That just that we had received the figure for the public?
I believe in November, you, okay.
November financial order?
The November financial orders with regard to free cash are going to be coming to you, or the, the financial orders regarding free cash will be coming to you in November.
Is there any other questions for the mayor? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mayor. I know the mayor's
Thank you, folks.
Going to be leaving at this point, or a few minutes.
I'm happy, I'm planning to stick around for a little while.
Okay. Now, let me see, what time are we? 7:30 for, perfect. Communications from other city employees by invitation, I would like to ask Chief Haig and Deputy Chief Gordon to come forward. And just, and just a reminder, Chief, we're here to talk about the Community Resource Policing Program and the status of the construction.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I'm going to try to be brief for you. I know you have a busy agenda, and this is more of just an update, but we'll try to leave a little bit of time for questions. We had sent some information to all of you. I know it probably looks like a whole bunch of numbers. Hopefully, we can explain a little bit better for you. But we're here to just update on our Community Resource Program, which involves our CIT program, as well as our association with CSO and our mental health partners here in Greenfield and throughout the county. We have had a fairly busy year. We've had roughly 11,660 calls, again, roughly, because it takes a little bit more to, to get it, that have come into the police department in general. That's for everything. As you know, we started this program with CSO so that we could start a diversion-style program to get people assistance that is not necessarily police response necessary. So instead of having us respond to every call and making determinations, we're actually able to often bring in other resources or divert it completely. So what we gave to you tonight, just to look at, and again, we've been doing this for a while, but we broke it down for the last nine months because of time. We have had approximately this month, 349 calls that have come in on our 911 line that we have not had police response for, that we have been able to directly divert from our dispatch center. They're, they're trained folks. They're very professional. Obviously, if it's a situation that involves, you know, life, you know, property, self-destruction type of behavior, we're going to respond appropriately. But our, our goal is to, you know, receive that information, figure out right there if these are people that have been high utilizers of, of us before and aren't necessarily in need of a police response, but are in need of a response in some other fashion. So we had 349 of those calls that we diverted immediately from dispatch, no police response at all. In January to September, we had approximately 292 total responses of our co-response, which would be some combination of our, our police officers who are assigned to our CSO division to deal with those particular calls that we couldn't divert. Obviously, our goal is to get out of the mental health field. People don't want police doing mental health. We want to be able to divert it to the people that are more appropriate to handle it. I think these numbers will show you that we're, we're tracking in a good direction. I'm not saying that we're perfect, and I'm not saying that we're done. But if you look at those 292 calls, calls that we actually did in co-response, and that's in that data that we sent, 71 were handled by phone, and 221 were handled in-person responses. We didn't break that down for you because it would take a lot more than just the few minutes we have tonight. But this means that we may have had a response where officers were there as support for CSO. So CSO was the primary that handled it, and we're there to just to make sure they feel comfortable and safe in the job that they're doing. Or that we were there first, we, we diffused the situation, we, we, we calmed the situation, and then we were able to have CSO or another agency take over from there. But it was an initial response of the, of the co-response group. So we broke it down monthly for you. Just to give you a little bit more in the nine months, our numbers are at 292, Deerfield and Montague, who are also part of this three-town unit. They had, Deerfield had 14, Montague had 16. So we are obviously seeing substantially more calls coming in. But again, we're, we're obviously a much bigger community, and we have, you know, other agencies in town that, that we're, we're having to interact with folks that, that the other two just don't have that ability to do at this time. We basically had roughly around 988 mental health calls that have come in as mental health in some fashion. Again, to break that down would take a lot of time, and, and we would obviously welcome doing that. We're, we're tracking many different ways. CSO is in our building. They have a system where they're entering as well, and they're communicating with their supervisors as well as our supervisors to, to figure out what the best responses are. For the 988, that went to mental health. Crisis, we're trying, I'm sorry, 988 is the mental health. That's where we're, we're pushing to. And the crisis division is CSO. So we're, we're pushing it out in that, as well as other agencies. So again, I just want to be a little bit clear that we don't have specific numbers on it. But those numbers that we gave you, you can, you can reference, obviously. We are in the process right now, we did get our two grants again. You will see that there's a $200,000 co-response grant. That is the money that goes directly to CSO. So that's, that's for their portion, their folks, their, their needs within our, within our co-response for the three communities. We also received a grant for $100,000 CIT, which we have done routinely. I'm not sure how many years now we've, we've gotten this. But, but yeah, we've had this for a lot of years. That's for our GPD overtime resources for extra programming that we do, our training. We'll often put together, you know, officers with CSO folks for overtime to do different meetings, different outreach. You'll probably have seen, we've had a lot more people downtown interacting with folks. That's what that money is for, and that's for Greenfield. The other two communities need to go out and get their own financial The other two communities need to go out and get their own financial, additional financial funds on their own. So, so I think Deerfield got $50,000. I'm not sure about Montague, what, if, if they went for it or not. Those are additional grants on top of it. I don't wanna take up too much time if people have questions, because I know there might be some questions of us in this piece.
Chief, and that's just a reminder that I'm going to only allow questions on the topic that was on the agenda at this point, which was this Community Resource Program. Counselor Lapinski?
So I'm delighted to hear that you're using those, these programs to this effect. I think it's the direction we ought to be headed, and I'm glad that it's working. My question is, if the number of calls that you're able to divert completely continue to grow, as I imagine you're hoping that they, that it does, in the future, could we see this as potentially leading to the city needing less police officers overall?
I don't see that happening because the calls for service are still there. We're doing this with, with a minimal number of people right now, as well as paying overtime to even cover these kind of things. So, so I don't, I mean, we would, you know, we have other things that right now we are, I don't wanna say ignoring, but that aren't, we, we don't have a traffic detail anymore. We don't have, you know, we don't have a downtown walking beat right now that we used to have. We, we've utilized the folks in a different manner. So I'd like to get to the point where we could bring those type of things back where, you know, I heard Chair Priletti talking about the speeding on High Street. Agreed. It would be nice to have what we used to have a couple of years back, where we had a dedicated one or two folks that are just handling traffic complaints, quite honestly, you know. As you know, school bus complaints for us is, is heavy when they're running, you know, stop signs that are out there, and morning traffic is obviously heavier than, than, for school, than noon, but afternoon traffic, it picks back up again for school. So I'd rather divert our resources to that, and the mental health resources, we continue to, to go in the other direction to the folks that really are the professionals.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilmore?
Just for a little context, you say you divert, what was it, a little over three hundred?
Three hundred and fifty, approximately, three forty-nine.
What would you say is the percentage of your calls that are getting diverted now? Just so I have a, understand, like, is that a lot? Is that half? Is that quarter?
Well, three forty-nine of the, we had eleven thousand six hundred and sixty calls, not doing the math in my head, but that was the same, same timeframe. So of those eleven thousand six sixty, three fifty of them were diverted, just in general that came in. So you can drop that down to say, what, six hundred and something. Of the six hundred, we're, we're about a forty-four percent, is that what we figured for mental health, type of related in some fashion when things are coming in? In some fashion, I'm not saying it's all crisis, but it's, it's a, you know, you have any types of calls that we have, there, there's typically some, you know, substance abuse, some type of mental health, some type of interaction with someone that may or may not need some other services, but still require police services. So I mean, the number is, is right around there when you look at the ones that we had left that were two ninety-two, I think I said. And then you're looking at about six hundred and something additional calls, so it's about fifty-seven percent of regular calls, and forty-four that we're dealing with mental health in some capacity.
Any other questions? Counselor Gullub?
All right, my computer dropped off.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I'm following those numbers. I think that you'd said that nine hundred and eighty-eight
I know, I misspoke on that. Nine eighty-eight is what we call them, what we're sending for mental health.
Yeah, no, that's what I have.
So not nine hundred and eighty-eight calls.
No, no.
So I'm sorry about that. That's my fault.
That's what I was about to say.
Yep.
So you said a total of, and this is in the nine months, right?
This is the nine, through September, yeah. We didn't do anything for October.
So I just wanna make sure, there's two questions, make sure I'm understanding the numbers. So the total number was one six sixty, and nine hundred and eighty-eight of those total calls were, were mental health calls. Is that, am I understanding that right?
Hold on, let me just, can I just pull it up? My computer dropped down, so the number's for you.
The, the nine eight eight, he misspoke.
I misspoke on the total.
He just looked at his, his piece of paper. Nine eight eight is the hotline
That we call.
That, that we divert calls to. So we can divert calls to nine eight eight, which is like 911
Oh.
For mental, for behavioral health crisis hotline, or crisis services.
Correct. I misspoke. That's what I tried to grab myself on, because the number's fairly close. So I'm, I'm just doing the quick math for you. So you're looking at about six hundred and forty-one calls of those eleven thousand six sixty are mental health-related in some fashion, based on, like I said, this is very rough numbers, but it's based on our criteria that we looked up for you for this particular presentation with CSO. But, so you're looking at six hundred and, like I said, forty-one calls right there of the eleven thousand six sixty that came in. Now, again, those are calls coming into the PD. Those, those could be calls for a multitude of things. We take fire calls, obviously. We, we take medical calls that are not mental health, that we're transferring, that we're transferring to AMR. So those are the calls coming into our building. Our dispatch center is handling.
Okay, so nine eight eight is the phone number?
Nine eight eight's the phone number.
All right, and?
So we have two, two options, nine eight eight and crisis, which is direct to CSO.
Okay, great. And so, yeah, that's what I have. So if three forty-nine are non-police response, two ninety-two are going to co-response, the total of that is six forty-one. And then you said, so six forty-one, I imagine not all of those are, I mean, imagine that most of those are men?
Those are all mental health, in some fashion. I'm not saying they're all crisis. They're not all specific. We can't break that down for you that easily.
Yeah.
But that's the type of call that's coming in. And then the other calls that are coming in are for other things. 911 for other things, accidents, medicals.
Okay.
Dispatching for other agencies.
And do you know, you, you just a moment ago said six sixty for mental health, but it sounds like that was an estimation. Are there, of the, those, those additional one thousand, is there a percentage of those that are also related to mental health? Or I don't know even how your category, like how you're defining the category of mental health, because that's?
Right. So we, we were here, we were asked to provide information on the co-response program.
Okay.
So the numbers that you have, the three hundred and forty-nine diverted calls, that's something that we're proud to, to, to tell you about, because we're the only agency, according to DMH, that have 911 diversion right from the instant of 911, having dispatchers making those decisions and pushing those calls away from police services. So we wanted to accent that. But that really doesn't have as much to do with co-response as CIT. There's two different kind of things here. Also, the numbers that we have here are the co-response calls, but not necessarily the mental health calls or behavioral health, as we like to call it. There is additional calls that police officers have responded without that unit. Unfortunately, I don't have that number with me because we were here to talk about the unit.
Okay.
So there is additional behavioral health calls. Matter of fact, a lot of the calls are coded as, like he said, an overdose, but it also could have a behavioral health component, but our system is very antiquated, and we can only code it one thing. So it's very difficult for us to give you an actual perfect number of what we're dealing with because of that.
Okay. And are you working on that, on, on coding those more accurately? Is, or is that, would that require a?
Our, I hate to, our system is absolutely awful. Most of the state actually has it. It's, it's a, it's a really terrible system for coding. You can code it one way, unfortunately. So what we're trying to do is have more of the, the narratives and how it ends look appropriate, so we can search it that way. Because a call may come in, and it's, like I said, it could be a, a car accident, and then you get there, and that's not what it actually is. It was a car accident, but there was an element of something else. So we're trying to make sure that we get the end correctly. And that's why it's exceptionally hard for us to change things, to code things differently. We're working on it. We're, we're trying to add different types of calls in so that we can code it better when it comes in. But like I said, they don't always come in that same way. We're working on trying to make sure everybody changes it if they need to. When they get there and they find out it's something else, we need to change it to make sure it's accurate.
Okay.
It, it's, it can be done financially. Right now, it's, it's not, this is a constant thing that we do talk about as far as, especially with our co-response group, because CSO is keeping notes for us as well. They're keeping their own notes and their own coding, you know, on their end, and it's good that they're in our building, because then we can kinda get together here, and that's where we come up with these numbers together.
Okay.
Is there any other question?
I do, I do have one more thought. So I just wanna thank you for any of the work that you're doing to code these more and track them more effectively. And just about the three forty-nine, is that a significant, is that how it's been in the past? Or is that a significant recent increase?
That's a significant recent situation where before most of those calls, we would have sent an officer to, because we didn't work with our partner agencies, so we didn't understand the partner agencies. So, and the partner agencies didn't work with us. So when we partnered, we were able to find out that, we were able to create police drop-off centers where we can give somebody a ride to a clinician and bring them and drop them off. There are, the nine eight eight is a recent invention or, or system that is out there. The crisis services have, have additional clinicians now, and they can respond within an hour of a request. We respond within minutes. So if it's something that's high acuity, it's violent, somebody's gonna hurt themselves or others, we'll be there within minutes. But if it's something that can wait, it doesn't need to have police response, we ask the situation to wait and then send the clinician by themselves. Of course, sometimes those clinicians will call us and say they don't feel comfortable going to those calls. But that's recent, and, and like I said, I, we talked to DMH, it happened to be a meeting today, and I explained these numbers to them, and they're like, they, we were the first agency that this worker knew of that are doing that. I'm sure other agencies are doing it, but just not documenting it. We actually documenting those diversions.
And, and this is where some of the, the high utilizers come in, because the names are coming up. We're like, okay, we know that these other services are really more appropriate for them, and now we can do that as opposed to us showing up and then determining it.
All right, anything else on the community partnerships? Okay, if you wanna update us on the construction and finance?
I don't want to.
Okay, goodbye.
No, so as far as the dispatch, anybody that's been to our building right now sees the, the lovely paper paint job we have in the lobby. On, on the police department side, the building side ourselves, we're ready to go. We, we've moved dispatch into our roll call room. We've done all the wiring that we've been asked to do. We've done all the movement of the utilities that we've been asked to do. It's really now, we've been working with procurement, and we're waiting on an RFP, and we don't write RFPs. We just don't. We've worked with procurement this entire time. I know it's been very long. We have mountains of emails that we have been working on now for a very long time. Our building is ready to go. We're just waiting on the RFP for the dispatch itself. My understanding as far as the water infiltration issue, that RFP is ready to go out. I believe that they have, through procurement, they have identified the needs, the method for the RFP, and obviously, the funding is there right now, and that's prepared to go out, is my understanding for that piece. What we were told recently was that there was a couple more issues that, you know, procurement is working with the architects on to get the final bit of the RFP for the dispatch project. I can just tell you that we at the building are ready to go. Everything's out. We, we would throw a hammer in it today if we could. But that's the update. I can try to answer any questions. I, I would probably have to direct you to procurement when it comes to any type of RFP plan or financial, but the building itself, we're, we're ready to go.
Chief, let me just ask, what is procurement, you know, who are we talking about when we use that?
Procurement department within the town hall. We, we go through, we work with procurement, so that way we, you know, if it's a bidding process, which obviously it is, that the proper manner in which we get these bids and obtain them are done. They write the RFP out for the companies. Typically, it takes about thirty days once it goes out for responses, and then thirty days after that to accept the bid. And we have a department for that. So, you know, I, like, I kinda joke, I'm the chief of police, I don't build buildings. So I, you know, I can tell you what we need in the building. I, I, I'm not the one that's gonna tell you how to actually swing the hammer.
Agreed. I just didn't know if there was a way to help you facilitate that, and we can check on that.
She's working very hard with it. She has the whole time. It's been, it's been long, I understand, and, and I apologize. Our dispatchers might be happy right now because they're in a big room with real windows. But we'd like to get them in their permanent spot as soon as possible. They've been really good sports with us on this, and, and the officers have, we've, we've moved the officers back into a closet to, to do roll call. So everybody's, believe me, everybody's itching to get this going, and, you know, some of the other projects might have to suffer because it's probably gonna be a different price, I'd imagine, when it comes back than it was, you know, a year and a half ago. But we're willing to make sure the priority is dispatch and getting that taken care of, because as you see, even with these numbers, they're a hugely important part of our, our, our community and our, our public safety.
We're really right at the end of it. I was at the last meeting. We're at the area where, okay, we have to move this outlet from here to here, or fire alarm from here to here. They got the last thing. I believe the next meeting is gonna be the last we, approval meeting where we are ready to go, and then I would say, I would love to say January, I mean, not January, November, we'll, we'll be ready for the RFP. But I've said that since March, so you never know when it comes to, it's outside of our hands.
Thank you. Is there any questions on this piece by any counselors? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Very positive information. We, thanks for joining us tonight. Thank you. All right, we are going to go to public comments. Remember, when you come up, make sure the microphone is on green. State your name and your address for the record. Susan Warghantik?
Almost. I almost had it. I just slurred the end. I was, I was close, Susan. I was close. Yeah, next time. Good evening. My name is Susan Warghantik. I live at forty-five Forest Avenue. I came here to just quickly say that I support Senate Bills three thirty-five, three thirty-seven, and three oh three in terms of school funding, and I hope you will vote positively on that. But listening to the commentary about winter planning, I thought I should give you some more information from what we are doing at Housing Greenfield. First of all, the CSO beds, the five beds are three-month beds, so you should know that, so that, I'm not sure when they're gonna start, but probably in April, if it's wet, we don't have those beds anymore. We have been talking with the, with, with the interfaith council. They have made a deal with the Red Roof Inn that they can pay the Red Roof Inn the same amount of money they were paying Days Inn. So we may be able to get people down there. The question is transportation, both for, both down there and back. We are even looking at the possibility of renting buses to just sit there and be idle and allow people to be warm inside. This is not as much a weekday issue as it is a weekend issue, and that's one of the important things. When Counselor Bullock was talking about families, the big time that we have when we need extra rooms for families, when there is a question of domestic violence or something else, are the weekends. And so I would like to ask if there are ways to use the, if we can get the staffing, and CSO is working on that, if we can get the staffing, can we use the John Sun on the weekends for housing people? Can we use a high, one of the gyms or one of the schools to? And we're not talking about every day. We're talking about when it's really cold. Because, you know, and I don't know, you know, what authority you have for that, but that's the kind of stuff we're looking at. We have been talking to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. They know from the community, as well as whatever the mayor has been talking about, that this is a crisis issue for us here. They are very, very aware of it. Craig's Doors in Amherst now has twenty beds for cold nights. Those are gonna fill up real fast, but if we can get one of those, we, or two of those, you know, that's someplace we can take folks. The outreach workers have said that this is the worst they have ever seen the question of people living in tents in town. We know that there are, anecdotal information, we have been talking to people who have been evicted from Springfield and are, are up here, because it's a little easier to live in a tent up here. So that's the information that I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Wahab?
You can hear me? All righty. Hi, my name is Wahab Inhas. I live on one sixty-two Davis Street. First off, I'd just like to say I urge the council to support the two resolutions that would increase state funding for our public school system. All righty. So I am troubled by the city's position regarding the private property rights of homeowners. The issue of home equity theft in Greenfield shows that the mayor, the current administration, the city leadership are hell-bent on stealing people's property rather than complying with the US Supreme Court ruling from last May, that state home equity the U.S. Supreme Court ruling from last May that state home equity theft is unconstitutional. The time is now to settle just compensation for the victims, as any further delays will incur unnecessary and exorbitant legal costs to the city. Our city's lawyer has just filed a lengthy memorandum of law in federal court that seeks to dismiss two lawsuits from former homeowners who lost equity beyond debt. Our lawyer is trying to absolve our city of any responsibility for years of taking surplus equity that does not belong to us. This is just wrong. Our lawyer has argued that if a person is unable to pay all their taxes back in time, the city has the right to completely extinguish all their property rights, and that their home becomes public property, and that when the house sells at auction, we have the right to keep all the equity. That's how we took $270,000 from a property owner on Stone Ridge Lane. I don't want Greenfield to dismiss the rights of these public property owners who are struggling to pay their taxes. This is not public money. It is private equity that parents pass down onto their heirs. We are stealing private property, and I think it's time that we stop trying to rationalize it and spending money on legal fees to challenge a decision by the Supreme Court. It saddens me that we took these people's money in the first place and that we are still fighting them when they're asking for the money back. I want to see our mayor and city leaders trying to settle these lawsuits and ensuring us that we will no longer take any excess equity from anyone. The victims of surplus equity theft are often elderly or disabled people. We should not be in the business of unhousing people. How much tax money did we just spend to have our lawyer prepare a motion to dismiss and a memorandum of law? Five months after the Supreme Court decision, we still have done nothing to correct what we have done wrong. Instead, we continue to say we want to help these people, but just can't figure out how to do it. Citizens have come in here and suggested how to resolve this inequity, how to resolve this equity problem. We just need to make these people whole and stop taking more from people than what they owe. It shouldn't take long for us to solve this problem and move on. As a city councilor, I would work to end home equity theft, and I'm a strong supporter in making whole with these people. Thank you.
Joan Marie?
My address is 2 Chestnut Hill, Greenfield, off of Highland Avenue, and I'm glad that the city council is here. I'm speaking on the subject of home equity theft. Also, I'd like to say, the last city council meeting where the city attorneys were speaking, I don't know how anyone else felt, but it was utterly confusing. And it reminds me of our experience when Mitchell Spade and I were in land court and the attorney was handling the case, and it just made it more confusing, more confusing. But we knew what we were there for and to represent, and we paid attention to every detail and we spoke up for it. We fought for our, our home and our life here in Greenfield, and we heard what was going on, what could possibly happen to other people, real property owners in Greenfield. It is not a pleasant experience. It is not for the faint of heart. And it is very detailed, and they really try to wear you out. But you know what? Mitchell and I have good hearts, and we stand up for what is right, even if it's not us. They're our neighbors. They deserve to be treated humanely. Now, I have something to read to you, please. The U.S. Supreme Court has ruled, May 25, 2023, in the case Tyler versus Hennepin County, that the states allowing municipalities to take more than what is due is unconstitutional, and thereby the city of Greenfield is guilty of violating real property owners' rights. The U.S. Supreme Court decision supersedes any state or local law that prevents real property owners from being fully compensated. Attorney Timmy's argument is moot and cannot circumvent the U.S. Supreme Court's decision and ruling. And Mitchell and I and Al Norman, we repeat our call for the city council of Greenfield to adopt, this is one of the ordinances, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 60, Section 87, the city directs the collector of taxes to use the power of sale to enforce a lien for taxes, not to exercise the power of taking under Chapter 60, Section 53. Pursuant to the provisions of MGL, Chapter 183, Section 21 and 27, Part 1, after an order of public sale of a foreclosed property, the distribution of proceeds shall treat the tax title holder, the city, like a mortgagee with the first priority interest in the proceeds from the priority, and treating the delinquent debtor, the property owner, as a mortgager, rendering the surplus, if any, to the mortgager, the homeowner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mitchell?
My name is Mitchell Spade, 2 Chestnut Hill, Greenfield. I think Wahab and Joan spoke very clearly about this home equity theft issue. There's a Supreme Court ruling that taking more than what is due is unconstitutional. I cannot understand how the city of Greenfield think that they can circumvent that decision. I'm gonna repeat the second ordinance that we hope that you will adopt. The Greenfield City Council amends the code of the city of Greenfield by adding Chapter 279, Home Equity Ordinance, Article 1. Provision of restitution as follows. Based upon property auction records of the tax collector, the city shall make reasonable efforts to contact all property owners who fall within the statute of limitations and who were subject to unconstitutional surplus equity-taking, to offer said property owners compensation for any excess equity taken, plus interest calculated from the date of taking by the city up to the date of final restitution. We've been trying to educate the council as well as the community for approximately 18 months on this issue. And I think by now, you should come to the realization that there's some merit to this. I listened to the mayor tonight, and it seems as though she's backpedaling now. I think you're in a lose-lose situation right now, and there's gonna be more suits to follow. So hopefully tonight, we can, you can vote on this and possibly adopt it and stop, stop this unconstitutional practice. Thank you.
Al Norman?
Council members, Al Norman, Grinnell Street in Greenfield. I'm gonna just address a few notes that came up during the earlier part of the session. Number one, we're not in land court. I want you to understand, we're not in land court. We are in federal U.S. District Court of the Western Division of Massachusetts. It boggles my mind that we have an administration that keeps referring to land court when we're not even in land court. Number two, no one who has come before you has addressed the original option we suggested at Chapter 60, Section 87. You have the power to tell your tax collector, you shall use the power of sale or the power of taking. What does that option mean? You've been told that power of sale means we can sell the house to a third party. That's not what power of sale means. Go to Chapter 183 and look at sections that we've referenced there. It means that when you, when you disperse funds from a sale, anything in excess goes back to the homeowner. These are not unsolvable problems, but you have not heard any, any, any of the legal people address that issue. Number three, agency fund. The mayor wants to set up an agency fund. What good is that to me as a homemaker? It's in an agency fund now. It's got a new name. It's still not coming back to me. I don't care about the agency fund. I want this money to be returned to the people that we owe. It's that straightforward. Number four, issue number four, Councilor Bullock, I think, I think the, what you got from Somerville was, is very important. I think the idea, however, of a 90% of home, home value, I wanna just say this caveat, the longer you wait to resolve one of these issues, the more I have to pay as a homeowner. And I'm paying 16% interest. So if we wait, if we wait and wait and wait to foreclose on these people, there, there will be no home equity. They will simply lose their home, and the heirs have lost whatever they thought mom and dad were gonna leave them through the sale of their home. It costs homeowners less, ironically, to make this process work quickly, but they lose their house. So it's like, either way, devil, you know, devil of the high sea, they're, they're sort of stuck. I think what we need to do is just stop, stop taking these properties and look at the outrageous interest that we're charging these people to go through the court process. So there's some, some changes that need to happen there. But basically, I like the research that you did, and I think that's the, the 90% of value. Several, several cities and towns, Montague has told me, we don't do auctions anymore. Auctions are a lose-lose situation for everybody. So it's this simple. I'm gonna try to put it as simply as I can. Simply took, we, simply stated, we took more money than we were owed, and now we owe these people the excess back that we took. The city council should now urge the mayor to pay this debt. They owed us taxes, now we know, we owe them the overage paid. Stop trying to justify what we did and admit that we owe the money, and pay it back with interest, just like these people paid our interest in legal bills. And I wanna close, Mr. President, by saying, please read the memorandum. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to do that. Read it. And ask, ask the administration the next time you see them, how much have we already spent in legal fees, trying to pretend that we didn't steal this money? Thank you.
Paul Javon? Thank you. Hesus?
I want to thank the members of the subcommittee that forwarded the school funding resolution to full council with a unanimous positive recommendation. The details behind the three state school funding bills that we are asking you to support tonight are complex. The reasons we are asking you to support them are not complex. In 2015, a commission created by the Commonwealth to examine the equity of school funding and state local school aid appropriations, found that the state was undercalculating the costs of K-12 education to school districts in Massachusetts by over $1 billion annually. For Greenfield, this represents well over $1 million every year for the last 20 years. In 2019, the state passed the Student Opportunity Act, which readjusted the funding formula. As a result, we saw an increase in the state local school aid of 1.7 million in 2022 and an increase of $500,000 in 2023. Combined, this is over $2 million, but that's $2 million extra that we are now getting from the state that has been missing every year for the last 20 years from our budget. To meet our school and city budget with the money we had, Greenfield made painful budget decisions in previous years. There was a time in the 90s when the costs the state calculated for funding the Greenfield School District were within a 5% margin of Greenfield's actual net school spending. Starting in 2000 and accelerating every few years, this percentage change would go from 10% to 15% to 20%, where for the last two years, the percentage of money Greenfield spends over the required local contribution is now 25%. The $8 billion rainy day fund that the state has was not built on the fiscal responsibility of state administrators, but by shortchanging municipalities and the state's local school aid obligations to our school districts. The state has acknowledged it undercalculated the costs and is funding some of those costs going forward, but not the cumulative effect of the funding being, being absent from our municipal budget for the last 20 years. A confident and resounding unanimous vote by Greenfield City councilors tonight will be a strong show of solidarity for local school funding advocates as we reach out to other districts to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. John Garrett?
So I just wanted to come up here and add my voice to the chorus of those speaking in favor of Senate bills 303 and 335 and 337. My experience with the other side of a contract negotiation table with members of school committees and administration who desperately wanted to be able to offer more at the bargaining table, but they didn't feel like they had the funding, I think is in Hatfield, is an experience that every school district in the Commonwealth has had. This resolution is a great opportunity, and I'm really gratified to see it in front of the council. And I'm also gratified to see that it's gonna be very likely a pretty one-way vote. It seems to be my impression of the room. I also wanted to, just on another note, say that I support the election warrant, which is coming up on November 7th. You guys are gonna be voting on it this evening. And I think it's also an opportunity to reflect and thank the members of the council for their service in general, especially those of you who have been here for years and will be leaving service soon. So I just wanted to take a moment as a, you know, candidate for city council to say thank you for all of your service and see you all on November 7th. Thanks.
Thank you. Stephanie Duglos?
I was looking at tonight's agenda and
Stephanie.
Can you hear me? Oh, Stephanie Duglos, Chapman Street, Greenfield, Mass. I come here all the time, so I just assumed everybody knew where I was. GSA is concerningly not available to the lowest and poorest communities. My understanding is they cannot expand to that area over at Lyden Woods, and there might be some money that might be being moved on that. I do have some more things to say about the grants. I would love to see these available to the public, the list available to the public on the city website, along with explanations as to each, what each one means and our potential financial contribution as a taxpayer. I'm a little concerned about the zoning changes and language proposed amendments. The meeting only had a handful of attendants at the planning board meeting when these were discussed. The meeting was also not recorded, and they did promote an alternate member, Amy McMahon, to a permanent member at that meeting. So I question as if they actually had a quorum to vote on that. I would like to see and support Jasper's motion this evening, that subcommittee meetings allow for public comment. I think it's important to hear from the public, especially when we might have the opportunity to have questions answered. I support the resolutions that are being brought forward this evening. I believe it's important to reach out for as much funding from the state. We spend money like a city. We might, we need money like a city. Otherwise, we need to tighten the belt a little bit more. My understanding, and I'm not quite sure, because the grant list said, list for 2023, it looks like we got a grand total of $25,883,893.13. And I would like to know what the taxpayer portion commitments are to that. And I had mentioned at the Ways and Means meeting that I was concerned about not having backup for potential financial requests that come through. I wasn't gonna mention the fact that my precinct I wasn't going to mention the fact that my precinct happens to be unrepresented at this moment, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Doug Selwyn, 38 Forest Avenue, Greenfield. Good evening. I want to briefly talk about things that have just have been talked about by others much more knowledgeable than I, so I'll do it really briefly. I want to communicate that FCCPR, Franklin County Continuing the Political Revolution, as an organization, strongly supports the resolutions around educational funding and hope that you will unanimously agree to support it tonight. One of the things about those, the legislation, S303, 335, and 337, is these legislative, these bills have been proposed, they're in motion. Trying to figure out school funding is near impossible because it's so complex, there's so many issues, and we say, what can we do about it? This is something we can do about it. It's already in motion. It's already been proposed. The resolutions, if they are passed by towns across the Commonwealth, will do a great deal to move things forward and convince the legislature to go for it. So when we tear our hair out, you can see I've done that a lot, when we tear our hair out trying to figure out, how can we do this? What steps can we take? This is a tangible step we can take, and this is something you can do to push that along. Secondly, I want to talk about the home equity theft. It's very simple conceptually. We should not be taking people's money. Our city should not be in the business of stealing from our people. One of the key points to me about this is that, especially when we're dealing with low-income folks who are homeowners, that's basically the equity they have. And so when we take their homes, we're taking their equity. It's not only that they lose their homes, but they lose whatever money they've saved, whatever resource they've got. And doing everything we can to avoid doing that is crucial. It's moral. It's a moral question. It's an ethical question. It's a legal question. And the speakers before me, I think, said it very clearly. So I hope we will act to support folks to stay in their homes. And third, I want to talk really briefly. When Amy Proetti was up here, she talked about the fact that there will likely be a public hearing about the new superintendent. I'm really concerned about the process. This has nothing to do with Karen Patnau, but the process of having a public meeting perhaps a day before the election seems to me real iffy in terms of how much public involvement there will be. There's going to be a lot of attention elsewhere. And if we really want to have a public, a true public process, I would hope there could be a time schedule that would be more favorable to getting participation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilors. Pamela Goodwin, 54 High Street, apartment 307. I want to start by saying I went recently to the Community Relations Committee. It was a horrifying experience. The press release said that it invites all residents in precincts 4, 5, and 6 to attend a meeting to share any concerns about their precinct. In September, there were 13 items that we were allowed to talk to, but I wasn't in that precinct. For this particular one, we were told we had to only talk about five items, and I was negligent that I did not ask my city councillor, Gilmore, would you please ship an email quick so I can talk about what I thought I was going to talk about? If you're going to have a press release, then make sure it's honest. And there were five to eight of us who were very, very angry because we only read about it in the paper. We assumed the paper was accurate. I know that can be a flaw right there in and of itself. We also got really tied up in this whole open meeting law. It was nasty. So I just was so blown away, I kind of didn't want to even be here tonight. I still am very upset. I'm going to be the broken record because I don't know where we are with this Portland Lou that we were finally told was going to happen. The emergency, I want to echo councillor Bullock. We don't have a generator backup over at the Weldon. We have 105 apartments. We have four to five people on 24/7 big oxygen tanks. So I wonder who's going to remove all the people that are non-ambulatory and check on them and get them where they can get heat. We have emergency lighting. That's pretty much it. I also am very annoyed and very grateful for councillor Toronzo to come out and ask our mayor, what is the emergency plan? I'm grateful that you all get emails, but I sit here going like, oh, I wonder what it is. When last month, I said Shelburne had one. We are using the high school up there. They all know what's going to happen, and we are going to have a mess again this winter. Tying into that, I move my car so it doesn't get towed, and I take it to the parking garage. And then I take my snow shovel, and I shovel my way back to where I live. I have been there before where there's no parking on the first, second, or whatever floor, and I think right now it's not going to be allowed. And if it is allowed, how is that going to work? Because we always get threatened with getting our cars towed. They do it all the time. I'd like an answer to where to put my car when we have a parking ban everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, y'all. My name is Stacy Sexton. I live at 74 High Street, and I am also a hopeful school committee member. I want to speak to you tonight, like so many others have done so far, about urging you to pass the resolutions in support of calling on our state to adequately fund our schools, or at least to begin to do so. I recognize that each of you have already shown how much you care about our schools and you want to see them not just function, but to thrive. And I also recognize that Greenfield by itself can never overcome the decades of disinvestment on the part of our state. If we had had these funds that Jesus was speaking to earlier over the past 20 years that we were denied, then maybe we wouldn't be in the difficult position that we were in this year of having to actually cut programs and cut staff. Maybe we would actually have adequate staffing levels that would allow us to be bouncing back from COVID rather than lingering in the dire streets that we're currently in. So when we talk about, like, you know, what's the point of even passing resolutions? It doesn't get us the money immediately, but it does send a message that there are things we could have done with these funds if we had had them all along. The money won't be an immediate fix, but it could allow us to begin to rebuild to where we would like to be over the coming decades. And while the resolutions will also not get us money right away, it does begin to fulfill our obligations as current and hopeful public servants to be the best advocates for our community that we can be and the loudest voices, you know, urging our needs to get met. I thank each of you for joining myself and for the other members of our community tonight to be the fierce advocates for Greenfield and for our schools and our staff and our kids. That's on that. I did have a wondering. I thought that I heard councillor Bullock earlier say, related to the home equity theft, that there are many people currently in eviction proceedings. This also could be related to, like, the warming shelters, et cetera. Is there a possibility, is there any appetite for a citywide eviction moratorium to just make sure that there are no families that are out on the streets in the cold this winter?
Thank you. We're going to go to Zoom. Peg Hall? Peg, are you there?
I am. Thank you, Peg Hall. Can you hear me?
Yeah, if you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Not sure why I'm seeing me twice, but that's exciting. Peg Hall, 34 Pierce Street. I would also like to support the school funding resolutions, but primarily I wanted to make sure that the public knows that they are invited to a community conversation about the changes that are proposed for Greenfield's recycling program because of the grant that we've received. I announced at Community Relations that we will be holding this at the John Zahn Center. They have double booked, and we have been bounced. I sent councillors all a new invitation. That will be Monday, October 30th, at 6:30 at the Lava Center. I hope you all will be able to join us. It is open to the public. The purpose is for the public to start talking about the grant. I want to make it very clear that Greening Greenfield and I are not trying to sabotage this grant in any way. We need that money. We need new trucks. But I think that within the grant, there is the possibility of some flexibility if we all agree what changes we could make that might allow us to both accept that money for the urgent, immediate term in capital costs, but also not put ourselves in a place where all of the operating costs in the future will be higher. So if that topic intrigues you and you would like to talk about it some more, this is going to be an informal conversation. We will not have formal speakers, though I will start off with some pros and cons, and the idea is to start the public talking about this. There is that limit of 49 people at the Jay-Z Center, so I would hope that the city would go on and have the next meeting and hold it in a larger venue. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Ayers?
Good evening, councilors. Thank you very much for this opportunity to provide public comments. First, I would really like to thank the city council members for all of your help over the past almost two years, having to do with our efforts to get some progress made on the Lunt cleanup.
Excuse me, Glenn.
I really especially want to thank councillor Bottomley and DeSorger, who have really been leaders in this effort. And as you know, we received a technical assistance grant from DEP earlier this spring, and that was to hire an independent LSP who we have been working with. The Lunt Neighborhood Group has been working with those folks. So far, we've spent $6,630 of that $20,000 grant. But just last week, we applied for a second round of funding. So that first $20,000 grant was for FY2324. This next round, we're asking for an additional $20,000 for FY2425. So that funding would start next year because we expect...
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Can I just stop you for a moment? I know you're...
Oh, I'm sorry. Glenn Ayers, Davis Street. So sorry.
I just want to make sure in compliance, I know that's a big...
Yep. So sorry about that.
Thank you.
This next funding cycle, we expect, will require a lot more help, technical assistance. And as the city council knows, our administration in Greenfield has been unwilling to hire an LSP. Instead, the city has spent probably $40,000 on legal advice having to do with the public involvement process. And I'll tell you that the lawyer working for the city has never once contacted the PIP group. The mayor has never contacted the PIP group. And DEP, just a couple of weeks ago, once again issued an order to the city. It was within the conditional approval of the scope of works, ordered the city to supply a PIP involvement schedule, a public involvement schedule. And again, the PIP group was never contacted. The city submitted a public involvement plan without ever talking to us, and that public involvement schedule was, the public will be involved as needed. So I know you are as frustrated as we are about this process, and I hope that the new city council will continue to work with the group and that we will hopefully have a way to make progress on this. Thank you for this opportunity to provide public comments.
Thank you. The council will take a recess for five minutes. Clerk Scott, can you check with the councillors that are attending via Zoom to make sure they're present?
Councillor Healy, can you respond, please?
I sure can. Hello.
Thank you. Councillor Gilmore, can you respond, please?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you.
All right. Everyone has returned. Please note that councillor Lapinski has not returned. Motions, orders, and resolutions. I am going to turn to councillor Ricketts, who is going to read the warrant for our city biennial election for November 7th.
Okay. Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council hereby approves the attached city biennial election warrant for November 7, 2023, and further authorizes the city council president to sign said warrant on behalf of the city council. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the said city who are qualified to vote in elections to meet at the public polling places designated for several precincts in said city as follows. Precincts 1 through 9, Greenfield High School, 21 Bar Avenue, on Tuesday, the 7th day of November 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the following purpose: to choose by ballot the following city office. One mayor, four-year term. One city council, precinct 1, four-year term. One city council, precinct 2, one-year term. Two city councils at large, four-year term. One city councillor, precinct 3, four-year term. Precinct, city councillor, precinct 4, four-year term. Three school committee members, four-year term. One assessor, four-year term. Three trustees of AK Warner Fund, two-year term. One elector under will of Oliver Smith, two-year term. Three trustees of Jenny Albescum Education Fund, two-year term. Given under our hands on this 18th day of October, Daniel Gwynne, city council president. Majority vote required.
Is that correct, Clerk Scott? Can I have a second for the warrant? Azred Elmer? All those in... Oh, yes. A reminder that vote-by-mail ballot applications are available on the city website, at the city library, and the John Zahn Community Center. You can apply online through the Secretary of State Office. An absentee voting is available to those who qualify. Any discussion on the warrant? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none? Warrant passes? Councillor Bullock?
Order number FY24024, city council order, move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments by the mayor. Board of Health, Carrie Memmets, term to expire December 31, 2025, short-term to maintain staggered terms. Board of Trustees of the Greenfield Public Libraries, Jim Zakara, term to expire December 31, 2024, short-term to replace Ed Berlin. Community Preservation Commission Planning Board Appointee, Amy McMahon, term to expire June 30, 2025, short-term to maintain staggered terms. Historical Commission, Sarah Bolduc, term to expire December 31, 2026. Planning Board, change from alternate to full member, Amy McMahon, term to expire December 31, 2024, short-term to maintain staggered terms. Majority vote required.
Second, Ricketts.
Motion's been made in the second. Is there a recommendation from committee?
There was a positive unanimous recommendation for this with the clarity that Amy McMahon had resigned from the Gseth Board and so was now able to populate other boards for the city.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion on any of the candidates before us? Counselor Goleb?
I guess I am wondering. Stephanie mentioned that there might not have been a quorum at the planning board meeting, and I'm wondering if they wanted to bring that question. Do we know?
I don't know the answer to that. I also... We really have no... I don't think it has a bearing on this vote, so it comes from the mayor, not from the planning board, our vote. So I don't think... It might be a situation for them that they'll have to look into, but as far as this vote goes, it comes from the mayor, so it's a different appointing authority. Counselor Bullock?
I just wonder, because one of these appointments is a planning board appointee, so does that... Is it actually that it's like a planning board liaison, or was this appointed by the planning board? In which case, I would be concerned if there wasn't a quorum.
Right.
And someone was appointed by a board without a quorum.
What's that? We do not have an answer to this question. I don't think I have anyone on that can answer this question. We can take it. Counselor Elmer?
I know we do have a public hearing scheduled on these issues, and I promise we'll follow up on that.
Any other comments on that? All right. We're going to move forward as read, and if we have to clarify, we can adjust based on any determination. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Was that in favor or opposed?
It was an aye.
Okay. Any abstentions? There is a delay, and I forget that all the time. Seeing none, the motion passes as read. Counselor Forghee?
I would like to ask if Counselor Goleb could read both of these motions. I don't have my computer here this evening, nor do I have a hard copy of it.
Sure. Counselor Goleb, do you mind reading the resolutions?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I also want to name that I'm going to add probably four words to this, that I'm going to make a motion just to clarify a piece. So I'm going to read that. I'm going to name what I'm...
No, so you want to read the motion as it's listed, and then we'll clarify after the motion's been accepted as a change.
Yep. Order number fiscal year 24022. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution titled "A Resolution to Endorse Senate Bill Number 303, An Act Increasing the Commonwealth's Share of the Education Foundation Budget." The city council moved that it be ordered that whereas in 1993, the Commonwealth passed the Education Reform Act, committing to sharing 41% of K-12 school funding costs for school districts throughout the Commonwealth, and established a minimum funding standard in the creation of the foundation budget for every school district. And whereas in 2015, the Foundation Review Budget Commission under-calculated the foundation budget costs by over $1 billion annually in the areas of special education in district teachers, health insurance and benefits, and special education out of district. And whereas in 2019, the legislature passed the Student Opportunity Act, which did not address 20 years of under-funded Chapter 70 local school aid relative to inflation and increased local school funding costs. And whereas S 303, an act increasing the Commonwealth's share of the education foundation budget, would phase in a 1% increase each year to the Commonwealth's share of K-12 education funding for five years, to increasing the state's share from 41% to 46%. The Greenfield City Council endorses the passage of S 303, and we urge state legislators to vote for the passage of these changes to state law. Furthermore, that we urge our local state legislators, school committee, and mayor to formally endorse and support the passage of these changes into state law. And furthermore, that we urge city councils, school committees, and mayors throughout Massachusetts to endorse the passage of these changes into state law.
Second, Forghee?
The motion's been made and seconded. I'll open this up for discussion. Counselor Forghee, do you have recommendations?
Yes, there was a positive unanimous recommendation coming out of CRC for this motion.
Counselor Goleb, did you need to make a change to this? I'm just trying to open the door for you.
Yeah. There's a... I want to move that we, in the second whereas, it should say, in 2015, the Foundation Review Budget Commission determined that the state had under-calculated. It wasn't the Budget Commission that had under-calculated. The Budget Commission determined that the state had under-calculated.
So does that require an amendment, or is that just a... It's an amendment. So would you put that in the form of an amendment?
Second, it was in the form of an amendment.
Okay. Yep.
And I'd like to note that that's five words, not four.
The motion has been made and seconded on the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is a clarifier, which I think is self-explanatory, any? All right. All right. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now, we would have discussion on the main motion as amended. Counselor Lapinski had his hand up before we amended.
I'd be happy to defer to Counselor Goleb since it's her motion and amendment.
I don't have a long speech or anything prepared. I just know that Counselor... Counselor Lapinski, you had asked at the CRC meeting why I had brought this forward. I could talk for a long time about that. I just want to say, I mean, knocking on doors in precinct 1, it's property taxes and it's schools, back-to-back. People care. People want our schools to thrive. And the city has a role in that, and we did our best to fulfill that responsibility in funding our schools in this last budget season. And the state has a very big responsibility. And we have limited tools in our power, in our disposal, to have this state live up to that responsibility, and this is one of those tools. And what this would do, just, there's a lot of words there. This would increase the foundation budget that the state... This foundation amount that the state pays, so that the state is paying a larger percentage of our school budget.
Counselor Lapinski, did you have something to add? And then Counselor Forghee?
I am ultimately going to vote for this, but I'm wondering, and I guess I'm... Is it okay if I address this to Counselor Goleb since it's her resolution?
No. You can address me and then...
I'll address it to you and call you Counselor Goleb.
That's fine. I've been called worse.
So Counselor Goleb, I plan to ultimately vote for this, but what can it actually accomplish other than making people understand that we agree with them?
If I was Counselor Goleb, I would say that any time we can send a message to the state of Massachusetts telling them to fund our schools, it can't be a bad idea. Counselor Goleb? Did I do all right as you? All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Counselor Forghee?
Thank you. I do also want to recognize Jesus Leva. He is the one who has shepherded through our community and brought it to Counselor Goleb for her sponsorship and her rewrite on language. So thank you so much. This is very worthy work that the council, I hope, will embrace and vote positive. Thank you.
Well said. Any other comments on this? Counselor Ricketts?
Yes, I just want to echo Counselor Forghee. I want to thank Jesus for doing all the heavy lifting. He's been in contact with us for a long time about this, before it even came forward, and he's been really beating this drum about education, so thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Counselor Goleb?
So, order number fiscal year 24023. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council approves the attached resolution titled "A Resolution to Endorse Senate Bills Number 335 and 337 Relating to Special Education Funding Reimbursement." The city council moved that it be resolved that whereas special education costs represent an extraordinary cost for the taxpayers of the city of Greenfield, over $3.8 million for fiscal year 2022 alone. And whereas the Commonwealth mandates that school districts fulfill special education requirements without fully funding these mandates. And whereas in 1993, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court stated that the Massachusetts Constitution 1780 Clause concerning education, quote, "is not merely aspirational or oratory, but also imposes on the Commonwealth an enforceable duty to provide an education for all its children, rich and poor, in every city and town throughout the public schools," and that the Commonwealth has failed to meet its constitutional obligation. And whereas S 335, "An Act to Increase Federal Education Circuit Breaker Reimbursement From 75% to 90% Would Increase the Commonwealth's Reimbursement to Municipalities of High-Cost Special Education Instruction and Transportation Costs From 75% to 90% of Costs Exceeding the Approved Cost Threshold." And whereas S 337, "An Act Relative to Adjusting Approved Cost Threshold Would Reduce the Approved Cost Threshold From $45,793 As Set in Fiscal Year 20 and Adjusted by the Foundation Inflation Index Annually To $37,120." This Greenfield City Council endorses the passage of S 335 and S 337, and urges state legislators to vote for the passage of these changes into state law. Furthermore, we urge our local state legislators, school committee, and mayor to formally endorse and support the passage of these changes into state law. And furthermore, we urge city councils, school committees, and mayors throughout Massachusetts communities to endorse and support the passage of these changes into state law.
Second, Ricketts?
Motion's been made and seconded?
There was a positive unanimous recommendation coming out of Community Relations Committee.
Thank you. Is there any comments, anything to add to this one, Counselor Goleb? Or is it... Good, okay. Any comments on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Positive, unanimous. Counselor Disorga?
I have to recuse myself from this next vote.
Thank you. She's not just leaving, though. She's leaving, so... Go ahead, Counselor Disorga.
The city council, upon recommendation of the mayor, in order to raise the COLA base for retirees pursuant to MGL Chapter 32, Section 35, Paragraph J, move that it be ordered that the city council, upon receipt of the Greenfield Retirement System Board's unanimous vote, authorizes the local option increase in the maximum base amount on which the retiree cost of living adjustment is calculated by $2,000, from the current base of $14,000 to new base of $16,000 for the fiscal year 2024. Majority vote required.
Counselor Disorga, could you reiterate this section for me?
Explanation and supporting rationale?
No, just, no, in the reading of the motion, you said MGL 32, Section...
Oh, MGL Chapter 32 and 103, Paragraph J.
Okay. Thank you. That motion's been made and seconded.
This received... This four in favor, and Counselor Forghee recused herself, so other than that, it was unanimous. And the explanation is underneath. The retirement board advocated for this due to unprecedented interest rates. As it says, the Greenfield Retirement System is in favor of this. It's all based on this very base level. And so to increase it by $2,000, we are much more in line with other municipalities, and we thought that was very reasonable.
Is there any other discussion on this? Counselor Lapinski?
This is just a comment on the rationale. Obviously, I'm in favor of this, but the interest rates at present are not unprecedented. They are just higher than they have been for a little while.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Motion passes? Presentations of petitions and similar papers, none. Reports of committees, none. Unfinished business, none. Old business, none. New business, first readings. Counselor Disorga?
City Council first reading, October 18, 2023. Repurpose $289,000 authorized for police station upgrades to dispatch communication system. Backup documentation sent to councilors separately. Approved payment of $12,707.40 for fiscal year 23. Energy Millbrook Solar invoice from fiscal year 24. Energy Millbrook Solar account 5209. Approved payment of $50,829.58 for fiscal year 23. GTR Greenfield Millbrook Solar LLC invoice. Seward Enterprise from fiscal year 24. WPCF Millbrook Solar account 5209. Approved payment of $21,178.99 for fiscal year 23. GTR Greenfield Millbrook Solar LLC invoice. Water Enterprise from fiscal year 24. Water Enterprise Millbrook Solar account 5209. Approved payment of $15,038.75 for fiscal year 23. Darty Wallace, Pillsbury, and Murphy PC invoice from fiscal year 24. Legal Town City account 5302. Approved the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between City of Greenfield and United Public Service Employees Union, representing the Department of Public Works, DPW, and the transfer... And transfer $25,200 from contract stabilization for parks' permanent salary wages, full-time line item 5111, $15,200, and wages custodian line item 5113, $10,000.
Thank you. Counselor Elmer? The notices of zoning amendments.
Notice of zoning proposals. Okay, there's seven different proposals here. This is a notice. We'll be discussing them. There's a date set, November 16. Then I've already sent forward a question to the planning board about the question about whether there was a legal majority. So, number one, miscellaneous zoning amendments. Number one, definition of farm, poultry, and dwelling. Three family. Section 255 marijuana establishments. Section 203, four sign regulations. Section 221, water supply protection district. establishments, Section 2034 sign regulations, Section 221 water supply protection district, zoning amendments to Section 2039, open space slash cluster development, zoning amendments to Section 250, major development review subsection B, application, Paragraph 1.
All right. Under new business, we had a change to the council rules of procedure to require all council subcommittees to have public comment on their agendas. It was added to this agenda, 10/17/23 at 10/16. I will forward this to A&amp;O for recommendation, as we do on any rule of procedure change, and we'll follow that up at your next meeting. Motions for reconsideration? Are there any? Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Meeting is adjourned at 9:12 p.m.